"To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all."
Just before the -- just before any business, we'll have one quick item the board gives us to take care of. I'm gonna have Carol Bowles give us an update on the condemned properties. So I entertain a motion to approve the amendments that change.
Some move.
Second, a motion on second, discussion of questions. All favor say aye.
Aye.
Close call. And the minutes of the July 15th meeting, do you have a motion to approve?
Some move.
A motion, second. Discussion of questions on the minutes. A motion, second, to approve the minutes of the July 15th meeting. All favor say aye.
Aye.
Close call. And the claim, bills in between 165,000 and 84616, do you have a motion to approve that?
Some move.
Second, a motion on second, discussion of questions on the bills in between. No, all favor say aye.
Aye.
Close call. And the current claims, 123,34429, do you have a motion to approve that?
Some move.
Second. A motion on second, any discussion of questions on the current claims?
I got one. That $500 worth of ashtrays we bought for here, I guess we couldn't get them any cheaper out of like boom concrete or somewhere out of Newell's. We had to pay a couple hundred bucks trucking on them.
What page are they on?
I don't know what page they're on. When I was going through the bills today, I come across them, but I don't know what page they're on. It was about $500 for two little concrete ashtrays. I thought it was kind of a... A little high, but...
I think that was for the Mueller settlement.
It was.
From what I've pulled up the past, they're more expensive than they should be.
Well, there's several places in Raph you can buy them too. I mean, my point is instead of paying a couple hundred bucks trucking to get them here, it's not like we're not going to Raph every now and again.
You bought them on Colorado.
It's in those places.
Okay, I'm talking with Chris. Thank you very much for your advice stuff. Any other questions on the current claims? Got a motion on second to approve. All favor say aye.
Aye.
Close call.
No.
And communication from the public, involved.
It was brought to my attention when we applied for our temporary liquor licenses for... We had the Minnesota South Dakota pledge and a wedding all wrapped into one, that when the councilman had a problem because we were serving... Well, he said we were serving under age, and I just wanted to come clarify what that problem was. So I was actually the one that took care of it at Galt. We did have some minors in there that we did not serve, however, we caught our friends giving them drinks. So I just wanted to kind of clarify that, no, there wasn't minors in there that were caught drinking. I caught them, or I guess that we served, I caught them drinking from their friends. We're the ones that called the cops and took care of it from there. I kind of wanted to bring up, you know, I wish instead of it being a hearsay, you know, someone was like, oh, I heard in court that maybe it would have brought up, been brought up to us first, instead of bringing it up, you know, in a city council meeting that it was a problem, maybe dig for the facts first before it was brought up. Because, no, we didn't serve them. It was more along the lines that their friends had liquor and was providing for them.
I'm the one that said that. Val Henry stopped me coming in the building that day, told me that three kids went to court. One said, the other two wouldn't say anything, one said that he pleaded guilty. So she said we had to be aware of it.
Yes.
And so I brought it up to her, the council.
Right, which, I mean, it wouldn't have affected us because we didn't, we weren't in the wrong anyway. And I just kind of wanted to get that out there, that we didn't, you know, I'm a, I went all the way to here to be a trainer so I can train all my employees, you know, most of my staff is, other than our temporary, you know, for the money for that, but... So everyone down there is aware of it. So I just kind of wanted to clear the air on that.
You did your due diligence-
Yes.
-in getting the cops involved-
Yes.
...and getting them out of the building.
Yes, yes, yes. So I kind of just wanted to clear the air and say that that's what happened.
Okay. Thank you.
I appreciate the information.
Yeah, that does change it.
Yeah.
Thanks. Mary and Greg Pitbulls?
Yeah, I'd like to talk first if I could.
Okay.
I'm Greg Froman, and again, this is kind of like deja vu for me on here because this latest pit bull attack, you all know where most of you, maybe a few of you are new, wasn't too long ago that my daughter, dog was viciously attacked by a pit bull. I do want to commend the city council. You have passed a good city ordinance for pet control. But my issue here tonight is enforcing this. There's a lot of issues in here. For example, somebody has to have insurance, liability insurance if they have a vicious animal. I'd like to know how that's being enforced. The dog catcher. On my way down here, I saw three dogs just wandering loose, three ring. Maybe they're not vicious, maybe they are. But I can tell you from my experience, the dog that attacked my dog was very vicious. So, again, I applaud you for the ordinance, but we need to take it one step further and start enforcing somehow. I don't have all the answers. Alls I know is that we haven't come far enough. And Mrs. Bledsoe, sure, I can speak to that we haven't accomplished what we started out with.
We take all information from the citizens and any ideas are. So if you think that you can help us to make this easier and better in the Florida, so way that we can control the problem that we, what we do have, which I know there's problems out there, but for the most part, we're pretty good in the community. But if you or anybody you know has ideas to help us, you're always welcome to come to us.
I can't imagine that I'm the only one that sees these dogs running wild. Three sausage round patrol, 25 hours a day. Maybe they have to take the initiative, call the dog catchers, say, come get this dog out the street. Now, there's many ways that we can start enforcing this. There's many ways we can just ignore it till next time. And I brought this up again and again. They're down here because another dog got attacked. I hate to see it when I come down here and this two-year-old kid got attacked and got its tail ripped out. So, you know, there's many ways to enforce it. If you need the public to call in the dogs, maybe you ought to put that on the street. Have a number, or who do we call? Do we call 911, say, hey, I got a loose dog here. Come get the dog out the street. And in your ordinance, it does say, everybody that has a vicious dog, now how you want to determine that's up to you. But in your ordinance, it does say they have to have $250,000 liability. How are you enforcing that?
Would they come to get their dog's license? Would we go by that? At some point, there has to be some honesty on the owner's part.
Well, I can tell you, the honesty on the owner's part that attacked my dog, I'm still paying that bill. He didn't have any insurance and he left. You know, I have no means of going after this individual. I can take a civil suit against him, but I guess we don't know where else. So, do you know the branded dog when they come in and get the dog license? Do you make them prove that they have insurance at the time they get the license? You know, that's one way to enforce that. You know, liability's great, that might help you out if your dog gets attacked and we own thousands and thousands of pet bill. But it doesn't help, it really doesn't help you after the fact, so.
I agree with you, Greg. Numerous times went to Harlan and said, we need to start enforcing our ordinances. It's not getting done, not just the dog, a lot of the ordinance. And, you know, it's another thing, and I hate to say this because I'm a councilman, but, you know, we sit here all day long saying that we pass all these ordinance and stuff, but we don't enforce them. And we don't. And I don't know how many times I asked Carly, you know, we need to start enforcing these, especially with a lot of enforcement, but nothing ever gets done. So I'm glad the public's come forth because evidently the councilman can't make it happen, so. Sorry about that, Don, I had to say it.
Well, I just got a verbal warning from Justin, the cop that works in the mornings. I was caught walking my dog without a leash, and he did pull me over and give me a verbal warning and said, the next time there won't be none. I'll get a ticket for it. So Justin is enforcing that. So just let some people know that he is doing it, so.
Thanks, Greg.
Okay, so it is, it's one thing when your dog dies of natural causes and that's fine and everything, but here's my dog. That got murdered by a big dog at Chautauqua Park on July 21st, middle of the afternoon. We were at One Enid Park and we had, there was a dog and a person and a little child with the girl. And we, my dogs didn't even see that dog, and it looked up, it was not, if it had a leash, she did not have a hold of it. And it was down getting a drink of water, it looked up and it went straight towards us and it attacked my dog and it killed it. I had taken it to the vet, and it lived for three days. But we're supposed to be portrayed as a safe town for hot springs, for elderly people, for people. I'm afraid to walk outside my door. Whenever I've taken my other dog, which thank God did survive, I see many, I mean, I see dogs and people, like he said, walking their dogs, have a leash in their hands, but not, you know, on it. State law says if I'm scared of that dog, you know, I have the right to shoot it, you know? And but we need to figure out something, you know, people who have been fined, they need to have stipper fines, be maybe sent to jail a second time, you know, repeat offenders, or something like that, you know? And it's not just pit bulls, it's any dog. Your ordinance says every dog needs to be on a leash. And that means shepherds, that means all of the dogs. You know, mine are always, always on a leash, anytime. And I expect that people, other people should be, especially the ones that know that their dogs, you know, they get licensed and stuff, and they're supposed to go and tell whoever, when they trade dogs. This dog had been traded around to several people, so you couldn't, you know, track him because they got given to other people, that's not my dog. They need to be, like he said, something with the insurance on them and be able to track which dogs they are. It just, it just, I don't know what to say.
Since the ordinance has been changed and put into effect, there have been three vicious dogs identified, and two of them have been euthanized, and one of them was relocated to a new location. So they've been removed, so the ordinances have been working, they have been enforced. I assure that.
How many fines have we ever issued for no leashes or?
I would have to check with the police department on that.
I don't think we've ever wrote a fine. Just a few. Is there?
This dog had had one fine a year ago for a dog at large. I don't know if it's ever bit anybody before, but in the...
We have taken several people to court for numerous dog violations or multiple dog violations, and they pay the fines and keep doing it.
Yeah, they need higher fines or jail time for the owners, maybe.
Maybe we can relook at our ordinance and look at what the fine schedule is and update any.
I really think you have it all in the ordinance. I read it. I'm 100% happy with the ordinance.
I think the ordinance we have that we just put on the books is a good one.
It's that one.
But I'm just, like you said, this dog has been passed from house to house, whatever. There are folks out there that aren't willing to play by the rules. And we don't have the manpower to go up and investigate for these issues. So these bad situations like this, we need all the help from the public to say, I've seen that dog, it's been in trouble before, now it's over in this household. Without that kind of information, we don't know. I mean, it's something that it's not just a burden on our animal control officer and the police officers, it's a burden on the whole community. If you're worried about your children, the animals that you have out there in your neighbor's homes, then you know more than we do. The only time we find out is if a situation like this happens or the police get involved. So it is just as much important for the public to help us with these problems as it is for us to blame the fire, or the police department or the animal control.
Well, the police department was called and the family, which one came, Jason, I believe, came right away. The girl had taken off with the dog, left the scene. She grabbed it by its collar, it had a collar on, and she took off with it. Somehow she did go and they did euthanize it the next day, and that is good. But I'm just scared that some other dog is going to get somebody else's love or their child because I was that close from having my grandson out there with me that day. And then what? You know, these things say if it bites a person, well, you know, too. Then it'd be a criminal offense. It's not a criminal offense if it doesn't kill a person. But boy, I'll tell you what, I was that close to having that baby out there.
But I mean, I'm not downgrading your situation, please don't take it that way. But truly, we can only do so much. We need help from the public to be a part of this also. So until people start getting used to the fact that they can call the police department, they can call city hall, they can call animal control officer. I know people actually call park rangers. You know, it sounds funny, but it is true. But that's what I mean. Unless we are told and informed, we can't do any better than what we're doing right now.
We will work on that. Enforcement is the key. Whether you get ready to enforce it by input from the public or you enforce it from the police officer. And I'm just talking about wild dogs and just running wild, like the three I saw on the way down here.
Well, I've been told in the past that more dogs are in town between the hours of 5:00 and 6:30. At what time do people get home from work? You say more dogs are running free in those hours because people come home, their dog, they don't have time to take them for a walk, so they let them go for a run. Well, this is when these situations start to cook. So help from the public is definitely appreciated.
We gotta get that pressure layer on that cooker and stop it. And we need the help of the public to do it.
I would very much like to stand up for the dogs and lift the progress on the dog park. You know, we've been trying to get a dog park going, and that would relieve, in my opinion, that would relieve a lot of the problems. I have a dog that I wouldn't mind, that I would trust, my dog, I'd trust, to run loose. But every time another dog comes up, they want to attack my dog.
We have a parks meeting tomorrow night, and I know that somebody's gonna be there.
I'm sorry?
We have a parks meeting tomorrow night, and I know that somebody's gonna be there to make a proposal on a dog park. Get contacted, and ask if they can-
What time?
5:15 at the library.
We've talked about this in the past, and it's about time that we bring it up for a reason.
We do have ideas and places, but the ideas every time they come up with it kind of get kicked to the side. So this issue is becoming a little hotter than I thought.
That dog park really scares me because what happens if you have this incident over and over in a dog park? Who, is it the city's liability?
Well, you'll be using the dog park at your own risk. You'll be, you'll have to be in control of your own animal.
It's a at-risk world, but that's why attorneys are here.
You know, I can control my animal.
Some people can. That's why we're here tonight talking about this.
But they should not be punished.
I agree.
Or if you got apples. Thanks, Brian. Going on the communication with the public, Evan's plunge, update Tim, that's you, I did.
That's me.
I'd like to begin the report, saying that we developed a mission and a vision statement, and we'd like to, we recommend that this vision and mission statement go for Evan's plunge. I'd like to read the mission statement, which is, "To encourage people of all ages to experience our natural warm spring, mineral spring. To be part of the fun and excitement, to energize their bodies and souls, and to help make Evan's plunge the Mecca of safe and friendly lifestyle." I love that word, "Mecca." I said it when I heard it. It identifies the idea and purpose, "Help Evan's plunge, Evan's plunge, the Mecca of safe and friendly lifestyle." It identifies what the council, the board, customers and stakeholders must value most about how to achieve this mission, encouraging people of all ages to experience the natural warm mineral springs. It identifies what our combined role must be, "It keeps everybody on track, leading to the ultimate goal without mentioning financial considerations." "To be part of the fun and excitement, and to energize the bodies and souls, and to make Evan's plunge the Mecca, which is a place many people want to go and hope to visit, and it shows real human value to us." And we recommend that that mission statement be the mission statement for Evan's plunge. The vision statement says, "We envision a future offering friendship, trust and respect with a commitment to an ever-changing, positive and true customer experience." This identifies how we will achieve this mission. It's a commitment to an ever-changing, positive and true customer experience. It identifies the core values of Evan's plunge, or what it should be, friendship, trust and respect. Inspiring enough to energize and motivate people, envision the future with commitment, positive and true customer experience. And for an ever-changing world, you always got to be willing to change. Anyway, we recommend that those become the mission and the vision statements for Evan's plunge, and you all have it there. Okay, we added one more member to the board, which brings our total to the number nine. And Scott gave us an update on the ADA, American's Disability Act, which showed we have lots of projects to complete, most are simple fixes. But as long as, and you guys can ask questions at any time too. Simple fixes, and as long as we can show progress, we have plenty of time to comply. It was determined the handicapped lift would not pass ADA regulations, and it needs to be moved to a more accessible area. The hot springs school team gave a great presentation, swim team gave a great presentation for the use of the plunge for their practices from September through March, Monday through Thursday, 4:00 p.m. to 6:00 p.m. All board members were highly receptive to the idea, but no recommendations were made at that time. Recommendations were made to take down the negative signage of the plunge, there's a lot of negative signs all over the plunge. And to replace them with more positive or professional-looking signs, all those signs have been pulled down. The board worked on designing new door and wall signs displaying friendly welcome and hours of operation. Signs were made by High Plains Graphics at no charge. A big thank you goes out to them, and free passes to the plunge were recommended. And they hadn't been there for years, so I mean, that would be kind of a neat thing to do. Recommendations were made for 30% off of all annual memberships for the month of July, and more promotions to come. Recommendations were made for cleaning concerns, including using volunteers to do some of the cleaning. We haven't really been using our volunteers for what we need them for. I mean, we got 29 volunteers out there, you know, so far, anyway, and we could have more if I know, but the thing is, we're not using them right now. In fact, they haven't been used right at all. Recommendations were made for better use of the volunteer portion, it's a number of 29 individuals. A big thank you goes out to the volunteers who manned the registration table in the July 1st opening, and who had the float in the Fourth of July parade. Recommendations were given for a new twilight pass at the motels for guests who check in after 7:00 p.m. They could buy a pass at the plunge for the next day and swim that night for free. That hasn't been done. Membership information was distributed by the board and Emily to the VA, Fall River Hospital and Soldier's Home. A strong recommendation was given to hire a full-time maintenance person as soon as possible for the city, golf course and Evan's plunge. A strong recommendation was given to create bylaws and code ethics for Evan's plunge. Our building condition and upkeep committee developed a report, which spelled out maintenance issues and listed them in order of immediate need. The report was given to the city for review. Our Silver Sneakers Subcommittee, and I'll fill you in on what that is. The Silver Sneakers is an innovative health exercise and wellness program, helping older adults live healthy, active lifestyles. Health plans around the country offer this award-winning program. Many towns in our area have this program, and the committee has been actively gathering information and will report back to the board. Our advertising committee developed the ad in the paper for the new ownership, at 30% off in annual memberships for July. And I'd like to reiterate, I'd like to reiterate again that the board, the minutes for the meeting are at city hall for everyone to look at. Our meetings are Wednesdays at 3:00 p.m. when they're posted. And if anybody has any suggestions or something they'd like to voice, they can contact me or one of the board members, my number's 745-4174. Thank you.
Thank you, Tim. Any questions on Tim at this time?
Yeah, well, the swim team deal, are you proposing to shut that down from 4:00 to 6:00?
No, we haven't even really, we discussed it a little bit, and Emily, I think, I don't remember if Emily was there, no, Emily wasn't with Sarah. And we discussed it, and they were talking about putting in a couple lanes for the swim team like they do now.
Aren't you gonna shut down the slides and the rings and everything?
No.
I suppose the rings.
Some of the, well, the rings might have a bit.
That's fine.
Yeah, she asked if she could have a lane that would be from, that went into the stairs, because they need a flip. Because it's not the right length going this other direction.
It's on the agenda for this next meeting to discuss.
Well, it brought to our attention that you're currently shutting down from 6:30 to 8:00 for a few people's swim laps, is that right?
That's in the morning. This is at night that they're asking.
We're not shutting down.
It's not-
Well, you're basically, you can't use the slides or the swings at this point.
You won't be able to use the rings. The slides, I don't know if they would be affected by that.
So if someone wants to come in and pay to use the pool, they can't use, but just certain pieces?
I had a man at 6:30 and I swam laps, and they, I brought my kids and they had offered, they're like, oh, well, tool, we turn the slides on for them. And I was like, I don't want to be going down the slide, I have to turn them on for them, because I was swimming laps. But yeah, they didn't have it, they just didn't have them on yet when I was there in the morning, but they offered, they'd turn them on for girls or whatever.
Basically, I guess it's, you know, for the old people in the morning, basically is what the thing was. And if it gets to be a problem, I guess we can readdress it.
We have not turned anybody away, I checked that one this afternoon. We have not turned anybody away between the hours of 6:00 and 7:30 because the slides were on. If there's a paid customer and they're coming in and paying full price to come in during the terrace, they're coming from the motels.
Are they gonna be able to use the rings and slide in the morning if they're going there?
We have not turned anybody away on that, like she said.
If it gets to be a problem, then we will relook at it, you know, I mean...
But right now, so what's happening?
Right now, right now, according to Emily.
Let me finish. If somebody goes in there right now between 6:00 and 7:30, gonna want to use the slides and the rings, they tend to-
I think they can use the slides.
I think it's posted that there's lap swimming at that time right now, but they have asked, and if they want to, they have done it. I've been there when they have.
Funny, row at the east end, they do laps, and that's where most pumps do laps.
That's where the rings are, so the rings-
But they want to close the whole full down, so they'll use the rings and the slides while they're doing laps.
Because they want to swim the whole length of the pool, is what they have to do.
We have not had any issues for the first month of operation, and we've been running that scenario for, since we all, since the city took it over on July 1.
Emily told us this afternoon that if somebody comes in and pays full price, they should be able to use the rings and the slides because they're paying customers.
I agree.
Yep, that's their feeling at the point.
Okay.
That's how it's being administered. We have not had a problem, and it's-
They were more than happy to turn them up for girls. I just didn't want them to- So I was like, no.
If it's a maintenance issue, it's a cost savings measure, you don't have to run the pumps as long during the day, so you know, we're-
Save $3.
Okay, thank you, Tim. Any other communication from the public? Yeah?
Hi, I'm Lisa Seiglin. I'm an executive director of Boyland Girls Club. I'm here tonight, I would like to invite all of you. We are having a community meeting Thursday. on Thursday, August 8th, at 6:00, and I invite you all to attend. We have some changes to our fall schedule coming up, and we'd like to hear everybody's concerns and comments and that. It'll be held at the club, which is located in Bethesda Lutheran Church, in their fellowship room, so, hope to see you.
At what time?
6:00 PM.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks.
Any other communications from the whole public?
Okay, we'll continue here. We need to make an appointment to the planning and zoning commission, we have to reappoint Mary Baker through December of 2017. Do we have a motion to authorize that appointment?
Motion, President.
Motion, not effective.
Is there anyone else that's expressed interest to get on there?
They haven't, to me, Wes, I can't speak for the commission, I don't know.
I'd like to see some new people on there from time to time. Have you ever advertised for people to be on there, I guess?
I don't think it was advertised. One thing we're doing, which probably is gonna make it easier in the future, is we're trying to get all of the appointments to all of our boards and commissions to expire at the end of the year, so at that time, we can go out and publicly announce what we have available, and also that way we won't forget them, because we have forgotten some in the past.
Will we be able to use the new website for that?
Yeah.
So we can publicize this.
Yeah.
Four years and not two like the city tells?
I think state law, I think determines those terms. Pretty sure it's state law, planning is only. If it is, it's by ordinance, but if it doesn't say four years, if it's by ordinance, then that could be, if it's, if it's an ordinance, we can change it.
Any other discussion? Got a motion, a second to approve the appointment, all the bankers say aye?
Aye.
All of you?
No. And we have one ordinance, 1135, rezoning at Sherman Street North by Highway 385. This is the first reading. Think you can understand from, from the ordinance and the map, what we're doing up there, it's taking an area town, rezoning it from a residential lane to a mixed use, and there's a couple very small pieces that will have a service that are going to residential lane.
I'll make a motion to.
Got a motion by George?
Second.
For three, and second, discussion and questions?
Yeah, I, I guess I talked to Scott today, and I kinda understand what they're planning, zoning's trying to do here, but, you know, they're, they're trying to control some of this growth in town, and I kinda disagree with them, because if, if we could get this all zoning commercial, which they tell me you can't have residential mixed in there, but maybe you could attract some new business to town, but you know, they, and the way it's worded, you read it, you can't have certain commercial businesses in there. For some reason, they've got an issue with an implement dealer, a concrete plant, I mean, I don't know why, but I, what he told me made sense, but I, I was sure, he told me that once we rezon this, this way, then we can kinda spot zone things commercial if we want.
See, the problem we've had, the same thing up on University, is if somebody wants to sell a house in that area, they can't get financing because the zoning isn't right for residential.
Well, that's what we were told, with all this, from the Mueller Center, all the lumberyard for the last two years, they were trying to rezon it, it never happened until now. And there was no big issue, and all of a sudden, there is, and I.
I think in those two years, we got to rezon this, now we're involved in that next, next time, I guess, but it never came through.
I'd talk to them about that too, they had wondered where we.
I don't know where we are, or what's happened, or how's it happening. Well, we've been rezoning, so they could have a business down there, but.
Who is we? Was that Bronx Council?
Somebody else was.
When?
Two years ago.
I think they do have a business there.
They've had a business there, so they've been operating on a violation basis for the last two years.
It was a mixed.
No, it, it was residential, the piece that.
Well, this is to bring it up to code.
No, this is entirely different piece you're talking about.
But we can make it work this way, and you can review it.
So they say.
If that's a mix, then if you wanna have a commercial, let's say I, I changed some of my lots, uh, close to Sherman, and it's a mix, and I say, okay, now I wanna go to commercial, and you know, and maybe I have a store or something going there, is that on review then? Because it is mixed, then it's easier to go to commercial?
Yes, that's the way it was explained to me, and that's what I told them.
That was the purpose of it.
Okay. Which, in turn, I told them I had an issue with, because that's always hanging over your head. You've got that use on review, we can, we can hire, reach out anytime.
But, but who, who has final authority on there? Does it go to the council? Does it go to the zoning board on the use on review?
Go to the zoning board, and then give it to us to recommend.
Okay, so now how easy is it to come back from commercial to residential? Or is it just, we figure it's residential, and then it's on review for a commercial parcel in there?
I don't know, I'll tell them this.
I'm, I'm not sure.
So Ken, I mean, the question is, can you build a house without review?
Yes, because it would be, it makes you can't use, but you can't.
But you can't have industrial for that.
Industrial.
Light industrial.
It's the industri- the industrial business that is not acceptable to mixed use, that's strictly commercial, so you can have a store, if a bicycle shop wanted to come in and go there, that could happen in a mixed use, but a, a cement plant couldn't come in and start operating there, is, is the best explanation.
So light industrial or light commercial?
You know, light commercial type.
Isn't that what it says?
Yes, yes.
So welding shop couldn't go in there, then?
They shouldn't be able to.
Yeah, we, you know, welding shop, we changed the mixed use, or mountain, mountain, something like this, I was thinking it was the mixed use.
Mountain with the use on review.
But now, that brings up another question, Harley. Let's say I have a manufacturing, you know, something small, let's say I produce fishing lures in there, that, that would be a.
That would be allowed in that mixed.
In that?
Yes.
Light industrial.
Light industrial, okay. The only thing that you're looking for is, is something that.
Tread line, or Hills material, or a cement plant, or, you know, I guess the implement dealer was mentioned, you know, something that takes up.
That's, that's not a manufacturing place, though.
But it wouldn't be considered light industrial.
I guess it kinda depends on.
It'd be like a car wash, you know, that sort of thing.
Yep.
So is there, you guys went through and, and said, okay, these businesses are okay, these aren't, or?
What's it guys do?
Oh, well, I mean, the planning commission.
The planning department reviewed the items that were there. Uh, this came as a request of the property owners in the area, and the city is why this is coming up.
I know I got a letter on there, and I figured, you know, that you guys would review that, you know, I mean, uh, cement plant, yeah, that's, but, hell, if it's gonna make the town a little money, too.
We have to look at that, you know, if, if it's something that's coming to town, we're not gonna chase them out of town, we're gonna figure out a way to keep them here.
But we're getting charged an extra hundred and fifty bucks, care information, dude.
Okay, well, you know, that's all I wanted to know, because if it changed your mind or whatever.
Well, but see, that's my biggest thing, is I, I'm trying to attract any business here I can, and that's why they, I, I want these guys to start explaining this to us. I don't, I'm tired of having to go to them and ask, I guess.
But what you need to do is review the comprehensive plan that the city adopted in 1981, that's way overdue to be reviewed, and I've been, since I've came here, I've been preaching, we need to redo the comp plan, and it can be anywhere from a forty thousand dollar deal to a hundred and twenty thousand dollar deal, to get the comp plan reviewed and updated to what you want, but in the meantime, that is the plan that the city council had adopted, and that's what the planning and zoning in the city has to live by, and just about everything we've been talking about is in that comprehensive plan, if you wanna take the time to, to read through that and review it, it talks about where we need to expand the business area, too, where do we need to expand water and sewer so we can attract residential and businesses. Uh, the area by your house, for instance, Wes, I think is item number four in that comprehensive plan, that the water and sewer should be extended up north 24th, as the third or the fourth recommended item for improvement, and that was way back in 1981.
Don't, don't we have, though, an engineer, a code enforcement officer, that could probably work with the zoning?
They, they do.
And strangely, and instead of costing a hundred and fifty thousand, is what I'm even looking at, they could.
Strangely enough, your code enforcement officer kinda helps put these meetings on.
Well, he, he has things brought to him, that's the object of a meeting, you know.
But I mean, you know, with, with active, you know, Ashley's a, a landowner in town, you know, with various properties, uh, you know, maybe he could be in on that off the council, you know, maybe one of these three, or, you know, have a.
I, I went to the meeting, I did have other properties, too, and I, I understand.
I was using, as an example, what I'm saying is a hundred and fifty thousand for a comp plan is, we've already got the people in place.
But it needs to be revised, yes.
Okay.
Yeah, the revision's been discussed for, as far as I know, back five years ago. And, because 1981 must be, must be realistic here, that is so outdated, it is pathetic. But then again, a lot of our ordinances were, so we have been going through ordinances. Long before Harley ever come along, uh, we talked to Scott about what we have to do in order to do that.
Black Hills Council Local Governments is the planning district for western South Dakota. They would be your most reasonable group to oversee it. They hold public meetings, they meet with the groups like you were talking about, to get input, what kind of, you know, should the city have, what direction should we go, whether it involves adding station, infrastructure improvements, business, recruitment, you know, everything that the city does.
I've worked with them quite a bit, on various projects, fire halls, community services, so.
And they're a good group, so I mean, your most economical choice would be to, you hire that group to do that, and that would be, you know, in the, you know, I think it'll still be around forty thousand even with them, but I could be wrong, I've not asked them for any estimate on that.
We'll have more information at the, it's a second hearing on this, too, we'll find a little bit more about exactly what is allowed, what isn't, we'll know that. I don't have the definitions of that right now. Okay, we've got a motion, a second to approve the first reading, any other discussion from the council? Got a motion, a second to approve, call the board please, Harley?
Ashley?
Yes.
Burris?
Yes.
Grimes?
Yes.
Holmes?
Yes.
Norton?
Yes.
Roeve?
Yes.
Fisher?
Yes.
Unanimous, Mr. Mayor?
Okay, and since this is a zoning ordinance change, we have to set a public hearing, I recommend setting that September 3rd at 7:15 PM. Entertain motions to set that hearing.
Come on.
And motion, a second? Okay, discussion or questions? All the bankers say aye?
Aye.
All of you? Personnel, we've got certain changes on there, I think you can see all those, I can read them. Well, a piece of old business, I've asked Carol to come in to discuss, quick, thanks for having me, a quick update on the condemned buildings that we've been working on. Carol, thanks.
The, the hatch complaint has been served, and we're still in the thirty day period for him to answer, um, so that's where that's at. The two Hot Springs for Pro- Citizens for Progress complaints, I have, the one is drafted, but we're trying to track down, um, some historical, uh, State Historical Society regulations, and whether we're in compliance with that. Both of those buildings have historical implications, one's in the historic district, and the other one is a designated historic building, and because of that, we've got some federal state guidelines that we need to be sure that we address, so that that doesn't come back and bite us. It's the city's responsibility under, actually, it's chapter one of the state code, to, to address those, and then for alternatives to destructions for those buildings, so that's, that's where we're at, but there's one building I think we're gonna be able to go ahead with, but, um, the historical society people were here to look at that building in 2011, and I just can't find any documents, and neither can Scott at this point, that they're finding, which I think the finding is, we can go ahead, but we don't have it in writing, and they can't find it up here, and we can't find it, and if we can't find it, we're gonna have to redo it, so, that's for a wrap.
Okay, thank you, Carol. For business, Fall River County accepted a low bid for unleaded gas from Nelson's of three point forty, three dollars and forty point three cents per gallon. Why do we get gas from? Well, usually, they have a little bit.
Because we can get it off of a state bid, we can piggyback off of someone else.
Right, I know, but we're doing, we hit Fall River County, and we're piggyback off of them, and why are we buying gas from?
Because ours is cheapest at the time.
Okay. Just curious, maybe. No. Some of that is for convenience, because the government tanks off the street shop. Uh, the Evans Plunge, we've got a structural engineer proposal from Albertson Engineering in fact, and part of his proposal asks if we would like them to prepare all the bids and author, or administer the roof job, it's, I don't see the numbers around, forty-five thousand dollars. And the question is, do we want them to put off the bid specs and do all the work? Tracy doesn't feel a little comfortable doing everything in-house, because he's not a structural engineer, and he says if we use Albertson, he said, we know we've got a company that's standing on it if there's something wrong. Can I cover that here, Harley?
Yes, Albertson has been the firm we've been using for the, the items that Carol just reviewed on our condemnations, and, and we're relying on their expertise to, to provide the necessary information. There are no plans to review, to verify what the structural components are of the plunge, and without having a structural engineer in the middle of this, I think the city would be remiss to, to attempt to just say we're going to do bid documents and put something on that without having a structural engineer.
So why are you saying nobody's saving plans for when they built the building? Because there had to have been plans.
All I'm saying is that there were no plans of the sale, and nobody had any of them that we know of, anyway. So we don't know if there was beam, I mean, if there was, you know, the columns, you know, put in, the, you know, the, the lateral and the vertical bondings in the concrete building, we're assuming that whoever builds concrete structures would have done it properly, but part of this test is to drill it and, and make sure that, that this would hold a roof structure over the top. They've also identified the areas of the roof already that would be subject to changing of the decking, and their recommendation is not to change the decking and put a flat roof on, but to go forward with a, with an actual structural roof, a truss roof over the top of it.
My question is, you guys don't have your money yet, so, what are you gonna, you guys just gonna keep borrowing money from the water and sewer to keep funding these things, or what do you, what's your goal?
We'll get a report, under my report, on the plunge update of where we were after one month of operation, and that'll tell you the revenue and expenses to date on what we have available for, for the future.
Someone told us if you got the same part, huh?
Well, Wes, the money isn't borrowed yet, no, we are working with a, a local bank that has re-entered the running, uh, they are supposed to let me know by the end of this week on whether they're in, gonna do it or not, and if they do, the money's in the bank in a real short order, if not, we have about fifteen days of working with the body. If not, we have about fifteen days of working with the body company and setting up the bond rating so we can get the best bond rate and, and go forward with the bond.
Your interest goes up every day, you know.
So that information will be coming to us when?
Uh, the bank information before the end of the week, as far as the plunge operation, I can get into it now if you wish, but.
No, I'm talking about, talking about the financial part.
Yeah, the financial part, we'll know whether Bank of the West is, is a player or not by the end of this week.
Is it gonna be under the, the original assumption of, what, three percent at Bank of the West? And then if we have to float our own bonds?
Under four is all that they've said to this.
Okay. But if we float our own bonds, then it goes to five?
Four point one is where we're at, with the bond issue as of three weeks ago, and like Wes said, interest rates go up and down every day, so we have to, you know, we're subject to the bond market when we actually lock in. Uh, we can get a rating if we wanna pay for that through, uh, Standards and Port, and that's a decision that, that would get us to three point eight one percent interest, if we chose to go that route.
Then what's the offset of getting the rating of saving?
Eleven, eleven thousand dollars.
Okay.
It would cost us eleven thousand dollars to get the rate reduced from four point one to three point eight one.
So, and you're looking at a twenty-year note?
That's correct.
And you're gonna save, what, point three percent, right?
No, you'd be saving, yeah, point three percent, that's correct.
Point three percent, okay, and then figure that out on what you're gonna carry through the principal and so forth, and then see whether it's even worth getting the rating or not.
That's, that's based on a one point nine million dollar.
Okay.
Bond.
Okay. Eleven thousand is cheap.
That's a decision for the board to make when it comes to.
Kurt, did you have a question?
Yeah, you keep talking three point eight and four point one, your agreement that you approved says it can go to five.
That's correct.
Okay.
And, and that's cause of the, the timing of the bond?
Absolutely. I can't imagine anyplace that has the flexibility to go higher, that would.
Well, the bond.
That's their, that's their business.
It's whatever that, they're restricted to add so many basis points over prime, and that's what they have to live with on their bond market.
Turn the business to make money off of your, shall we call it?
Mayor, I would make a motion that we hire the engineering company for a lump sum fee of twenty-five thousand six hundred dollars to take care of this roof issue on the plunge.
I have a motion in a second to go ahead with Albertson Engineering on the fees for the. When do those fees do need to be paid, and where does that money come from? That part of the twenty-five six, and it will also be plus all reimbursable expenses.
Yes.
Okay. Now, discussion, please. Answer my question.
Is that gonna be part of the hundred and forty thousand?
Yes. But remember, if, if we put another roof on there that costs a hundred and forty-eight, this is money out of our pocket at that point, cause a hundred and forty-eight is the last.
Well, you know you ain't gonna put a roof on there for a hundred and forty-eight, so.
But I said from the very get-go, before we even purchased this thing, that we need to have somebody that knows how to put a commercial roof on that building.
Well, we all know, so at this point, we all already know where we're gonna get the money.
I agree with you.
When we're gonna get the money, yes, we're gonna get the money.
Any other discussion? I have a motion in a second, Joe. Kurt has a question.
Your, their, their presentation here talks about doing a lot of different things, are you going to get a design from them for your twenty-five six, or are you just getting engineering? Or, I mean, it, it talks about assistance in obtaining bids and putting out bids, and what are you gonna end up with from this, is my question?
They've got compensation for services, they've got progress payments in here, schematic design, twenty percent, design development, twenty percent contract documents, forty percent bidding, five percent, and then construction administration, the other fifteen percent.
That's the breakdown in the twenty-five six?
That's the breakdown. I've got a copy of it for you here.
So, you will end up with, the way it reads here, two alternatives for a roof from this?
They are thinking they just wanna go with the one pitched roof, and I think that's what most of the council would prefer. If we go in and ask them for two alternatives, they might have to raise that fee, I, I'm not sure, I have not talked about that. What, can we get two roofs at the same twenty-five six number, Harley? You know?
Well, it, it says here two roofing alternatives, and it says here twenty-five six.
Yep, that, that's what their proposal says.
Okay. Yeah, everyone will get the two.
Are we still under question?
Yes.
The, the council does realize, in the future, that decking still gonna have to be fixed in some part of the pluggings, you know?
Okay. I think probably.
The old decking still gonna have to be fixed eventually.
I think we'll wanna take that old roof off, look at the damage, and any damaged places where it's structural, that especially would affect the visibility on the inside will have to be fixed. Probably get those skylights all out of there at the same time, budget will remove them, they're gonna be used. Okay, any other discussion? I have a motion in a second to approve the Albertson Engineering files for the plumbing roof, all right, say aye.
Aye.
Those know? Aye. No. And the Mammal site environmental review, we need an approval authorizing the city of Hot Springs to ask as a fiscal agent for HUD grant D-06 dash S.P. dash S.P. dash zero nine fifty, and authorizing the mayor to sign and approve the environmental review record, and any related documents for the Mammal site theater project. Entertain that motion.
So move.
Motion, say a second, Tim, discussion or questions?
Why are we doing this?
They can get a grant, it's, it's kinda like the community development block grounds, if they can get some kind of grant through HUD, the city has to be in the middle, the money has to go through the governor's authority.
So it's just a pastor?
It's pastor, call it, do it. I think you wanna look at the.
Can we charge it?
Right, yeah.
Twenty-five thousand dollars? Twenty-five thousand six hundred. Twenty-five six.
We've already have a hundred and ninety-eight thousand dollar grant, this is just, the review was something that came up, but we haven't done it. It was one done in two thousand six, but it never got published. Black Hills Council Local Governments did this one, and being we're adding less than twenty percent to the building, there's no environmental impact. The mayor needs to sign it, if he would, and then there's no publishing, and we can proceed forward with the grant. It's a EDI grant that was passed in two thousand six, we have to have this spent, right? Twentieth is September, or we lose it, so.
Good, if you got, if you need help, get ahold of us.
Yeah, we can help you do that.
Did that new Corvette come out of the square?
Yeah. First it did.
I've got a silly question, thought it was completely off so big, can you guys go put another footprint in the ground around your building, do you dig underneath it to, to see if there's anything down there?
We've already, we've already done a sample upfront, wherever the building is, so we know what we have to do with the buildings, and there's nothing else.
So there's no bone now? I just wondered about.
And Albertson is, is our structural one here. Very good.
So maybe we could tie hands together and let's get this slip money through there?
How did, how did you agree with?
I was gonna say, don't, don't, don't say stuff like that when you talk about it.
Any other, any other questions or discussion? We have a motion to authorize the approval, all right, say aye.
Aye.
Those know?
Thirteen five two fifty, we'll treat that.
Committee reports, admin promotion, Carl, did you have anything?
Uh, no sir, the only thing that, that we had made a discussion on, we were in impromptu meeting with Harley with concern of Wells Fargo, um, but we haven't made any decision or recommendation at this point.
Okay.
And also, we're working on the resolution for salaries right now.
Yeah. For budgets, right?
Yeah.
Okay, good. Thanks. Public Works, uh, anything from Public Works?
Discuss, best control, again. Kinda about going out a little bit, maybe checking on, going up for bids, or find out possibly, then I was got a little wet that leak down in front of the ambulance, moving on lift station replacement. And the drainage up on Almond and.
No name?
No name, is going to bid.
Okay, thanks Tim. Public Safety, Craig?
We have a meeting Wednesday at nine o'clock.
All right.
Close the recreation. I said, next Monday at nine o'clock.
We'll have a meeting tomorrow at five fifteen at the library. Okay, y'all come. All right, Harley, administrator.
Uh, the plunge has been in operation for one month as of July thirty-one, uh, revenue collection for the month of July is two hundred and nineteen thousand thirty-six dollars and seventy-five cents. As you recall, at the forum, we talked about, about eight hundred, eight hundred and fifty thousand dollars of revenue projected coming in for a full year. If you look at half of a year, we took over July, uh, you're looking at four hundred to four hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars, so in one month, we have taken in half of what we need for six months' worth of operation is estimated during the time that we were doing our projections for the forum. Insurance costs, for instance, came in about a thousand dollars under what we had projected, even with adding some insurance coverage on some of the items inside the facility, the slides, for instance, we're, we're, we've got special coverage on them if, if there were, you know, some problems, we would have, and this is all replacement cost, insurance coverage that we, we've got covered, so, so like, I think we're, revenue-wise, uh, we did good, we, as Tim announced, they did a thirty percent off blitz for memberships, so a good chunk of that came in, you know, from that membership drive to try to get a jumpstart on the revenue, since we were taking over in, in the middle of the season. As far as expenses to date for July, we, uh, we have, outside of the purchase of the facility, have spent thirty-four thousand two hundred and two dollars and fourteen cents, that's salaries, utilities, et cetera, for the busiest month of the year that we're told from the old owners, was from July.
Keep that in mind, July.
July, first of the rally.
That's it.
That was the reason we, we had to take over them.
Did, was your projections on the amount of yearly memberships sold? Did, did the actual memberships that were sold in July meet those expectations, or were they above or beyond, or below, when you originally?
The, the projections were done for an annual, so I, I don't know that I can answer your question, we've, uh, we, we keep, we're keeping track of the memberships, uh.
Okay, what track are you on, on the annuals, for an annual, on the amount of projected memberships? For instance, if you got a hundred in July, you're on track if you, if you projected twelve hundred.
Can I give you some info, for the whole year last year, they had like a hundred and sixty-five memberships, and we had like a hundred and seventy-one by the thirtieth or so of July, and we got more after that, so I don't know how many it is total right now, but, so we are more than what they had last year.
But for your projections, when you bought the plunge?
Yes.
Is my question, are you on track, or are you below, or are you above? That's what I'm asking.
Not from what they had last year, from what the board's projections. The board's projected only a sum for the whole year according to what we were given.
Okay, what was this sum?
It was about seven, six hundred and fifty, seven hundred thousand.
So if you sold a hundred and eighty-five or whatever, then you're above the projection?
Yes, that's.
That's all I was asking for.
Yes, yes. That's all it is, that's all we have right now.
Okay.
We did sell quite a bit in retail also, so that is some of the part that we were evaluating.
I was asking about the memberships.
Are you down, Harley?
Plunge, we need to set up budget meetings, if that was all the question. We do need to plan for later this month. Three, four budget meetings for sure, I don't know how long it'll take you to, to make a decision on setting the budget, we do have to have the first reading of the budget by the first meeting that's September, which will be the Tuesday after Labor Day for the first reading of the budget, so you need to have your work completed by then.
Twenty-fifth, we can do twenty-fifth. I'd say the month.
So you, you need to be done with your budget work before.
You said the end of the month, we need to set up a date for the end of the month.
No, you need to be done with your work by the end of the month, so I think you're gonna need three or four meetings for sure, unless you guys are all quick and.
They ain't gonna be quick, I guarantee that.
So, you know, I'd like to, if I, you guys could do that, I could go on with the rest of my report, you kind of think of.
Well, I'm gonna be gone next week for sure, so next week's out for me.
Do you have most of the reports from the individual departments?
I do not have all of them in as of yet, no.
You have some, but not all of them, okay.
So, if you're gonna wait till after next week to set meetings, you're gonna need to do, you know, Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday, or something on the following week, if that's what you're gonna do for a couple hours, and once you get over an hour, hour and a half, you, you get punchy and pushy, and you become in not as productive as you should be.
And cranky.
Probably should, if you mean.
Sure, wait till we have to, after next time, is that the feeling of the council?
Yes.
All right, can we start on Tuesday, the twentieth?
Sounds good to me.
I think so. What's a good time for people? Six-thirty?
Pretty optimal, where it was.
Nine A.M.
Anytime.
I'm retired.
And evidently very proud of it.
It's gotta be at least five o'clock, cause I don't know why else, and.
At least five. Five or five-thirty, which is best?
Yeah, but don't you wanna take a bath, get a drink?
What do you want you to think about? I've been around you when you're stinky.
Should we start at five-thirty on the twentieth?
That sounds good.
August twentieth at five-thirty. And I'm planning, uh, Wednesday and Thursday also, three days in a row, so if you'd like to do, if you want a cranky fest, all right, we'll start Tuesday, Wednesday, and Thursday the twentieth at five-thirty.
Is that the official notice for the newspaper, or do you need something written?
I wrote it down.
Good. You didn't notify.
We will have a quorum on those nights, and the public is welcome in the city hall, so. At City Hall, correct?
Yes.
Oh, I, I encourage the public to come and learn how their money's spent. Seriously, I mean, it's an eye-opening experience going through the budget.
The, the city makes up one-third of your tax bill in Hot Springs, so these meetings, you can, your opportunity to control next year's budget for the city by one-third?
All citizens, where are you mandated to go to?
Did receive a letter this week from the Foster Grandparent Program out of Sturgis, they are inviting all of the council people to a Foster grandparents' celebration starting at ten-thirty at Canyon Lake Chop House on Friday, August sixteenth, so all of the council are invited, I do have a copy of the letter talking about all their, their programs that they, they do. programs that they, uh, that they do at the foster, anything here, but they talk about all the good that they've been doing in, uh, grandparents helping children in Belfush, Box Elder, Camp Crook, Custer, Fort Pier, Hot Springs, Newell, Oryx Pier, Rapid City, Spearfish, Sturgis. Senior companions serve these communities.
Sounds like a horror movie, me and the Chop House. I wanna go there.
Actually, it's very...
Wes is making a grand here.
I was kinda hoping some of the Vision Twenty Twenty people would be here, but we've also been served notice that, uh, the state is taking applications, or actually letters of intent, for the TAP program, which is the Transportation Alternative Program, that's for biking, trail sidewalks, hiking, uh, the state has combined several of the old I C T, uh, transportation grants that have been out there over the years into a whole brand-new program called TAP, and we have till September twenty-third to provide letters of intent, and if we're accepted, then we provide full application, so you don't have to jump through all the hoops, uh, right away, they, they're taking the proposals and how you intend to proceed with the grant, and then they accept you at that point, and then you can provide the thirty-page application with all the supporting data after that, so encourage any of the groups that are working on transportation activities, uh, trail system in town, transportation...
Street system, we can put twenty-five bicycle lanes all side by side to make that work. Be a couple near.
There you go. That's all I have.
Okay, I didn't have anything, we do have to go to executive session for just a little bit on legal matter.
Oh, should we go into executive session?
I have a motion, Carl, second, I'm going to executive session for legal matters. All in favor to say aye?
Aye.
All in favor? Take about four minutes, three.
Yeah, James, ten minutes, four minutes.
Aye.
Okay. You want to sign out?